All right. It is seven o'clock somewhere. No, it is seven o'clock. So I'm going to call the meeting to order and welcome everyone. Nice to see so many of you here. I know why, so that's, I'm glad you're here. With that, just a friendly reminder, if you have cell phones, please turn them on silent or airplane mode so they don't disrupt the meeting. And also, I'd like that you would join me for a pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
So again, welcome and also welcome to those later on that might be watching on YouTube. This is the Minnetonka City Council Meeting for June 20th, 2022. First order, I'd like to make some introductions in case you don't know some of us up here. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And next to me, on my left, we have council members Pan Mortenson, John Trumperland, Ann McGregor, Kathleen Refkin. And on the end, we have our city engineer with WSB, Allison Fausky. We have our director of administration, Ally Poulphus, and our director of public works, Gary Peters. And behind them, we have our city clerk, Don Motzko. Next to me, on my right, we have our city administrator, Jasper Krugel. Brian Grimm is our finance director. David Abel is our community development director. Ron Beatty is with Kennedy and Graven, he is our city attorney. And on the end, we have our chief of police, Paul Falls. So with that, I'm going to make two additions to our regular agenda. And we are going to add the two items that we did not get to in our work session. And that is a discussion of budget levy and then, so 23 budget levy considerations and then the mid-co addition options. And those will be added to business item six B and C. We had a very lengthy discussion regarding assessments, so we did not get to those two items. With that, are there any other additions or changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as altered, changed?
Some move.
Thank you, Ms. Mortensen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperland. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. We don't have any special presentations tonight, but we have special people with us tonight. So we have a number of people that are signed up here. And again, I'm just going to say, we did have a lengthy discussion on special assessments at our work session. So first, we'll start with Cindy Notch. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record and speak clearly into the microphone. And you will have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Cindy Notch, I live at 1250 Morningview Drive. And so, yes, we were looking at our, I read the meetings, the work session notes about our assessment of 24,500 each parcel. And said, wow, that's a pretty eye-popping number. And because I was, I was sort of following along for years, seeing Morningview East through Westwood, getting kicked down the road. And I understand that because it's a complicated street. And we all agree that we want it fixed. So I was looking, I was following Minneapolis Avenue and I thought, oh, their assessments are like, what, maybe 8,000 or something like 9,000 or something? Or lower? Well, I thought, oh, that would be great because that would be worth every penny to me. So I just thought that the 25 was a pretty high price. And so, I don't know if, and so I had asked Mr. Peters, who gets calls from Morningview Drive, Eastfield, Westwood, all the time. I asked about the water main breaks because I've lived there a long time and I could only remember one. So I got the report today, so there have been zero water main breaks in the last seven years. And so I realized that the water main is really old, but it's holding up pretty well. So maybe there's a way of different options of saying, okay, if we think the water main will last a bit longer, maybe we can put off the water main for 10 years and fix it here and there. And, you know, maybe do what I think we really need is I don't think anyone even cares about the ditches and stuff. If we could get those, I think they're called beehive drains on the existing exits down to the, to the lake. I think that would be super helpful because what happens is they plug and then everyone gets flooded. But if we could just re, you know, repaint, you know, dig out the top few inches, repaint, put in more effective drain covers. I'd like to see more than one option than the big cabuna that's out there right now. That's all, thank you for your time and thanks because I know you've been here since pre.
Thank you, Ms. Notch. Mr. Notch, are you kind of reiterating what your wife said?
Different.
Okay. It's hard to read, I'm sorry, there's a bunch of scriggles here, but...
You're used to my confusion, you know, like. But basically, the one thing I wanted to talk about is there's been some issues with rocks and lot coverage on the parcel, you know, just two houses away from us. And I don't believe the city is necessarily enforcing their code. And in particular, I don't know if you saw the picture I sent you, but there's like 15 feet, the whole line from the property line to the residence, it's all just filled up with rock and it's over a plastic liner material. And I put a question into Adam and he just got back to me late this afternoon. And I was asking him, well, what's the requirement for permeability for that to meet city code? And then he gets back, says, well, there's no minimum requirement. Fabric used by the applicant has greater permeability than infiltration rate of existing soil on site determined by test to pay. But what doesn't make sense, if you look at the city's code, it's very clear. And even if you have a gravel driveway in Minnetonka, that's considered an impervious surface, okay? So I don't understand if you put gravel over like a fabric, wheat block fabric, now all of a sudden it's not considered a hardcover? It doesn't make sense. So that's what, again, the code here, it says, we're talking about hardcover. It says lot coverage means area of the lot occupied by impervious material, including but not limited to decks with one quarter inch spacing or less, decks, surface underneath that is impervious. Concrete or paver patios, vituminous patios, rocks with plastic liner, quartz, quartz and tass, sandboxes with liners, roof structures, paved driveways, driveway surfaces, it says in parentheses, crushed vituminous, concrete, gravel, pavers, or other rock. And it says also landscape beds with linings is considered hardcover, okay? And concrete or paver sidewalks. So I don't, they're not enforcing the code here and I don't know why. And I'm looking for a little bit of help from you guys to talk to our friends at WSB and kind of put them on notice that this doesn't make sense. There's another thing too out there. They put a brown concrete paver patio right adjacent to the lake shore. And again, if you go by the city code here, it's very clear. And this is in the code, it was in the email that I sent all of you. And God bless you for your time here and helping everybody else. But it says, in no instance will impervious surfaces be placed less than 50 feet from ordinary high water main. And that's not being done here. And I don't get it, you know, this is pretty straightforward stuff.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm not sure why they're using the foot liners on, but it's kind of wake them up if you're unsure, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Notch.
Thank you.
David, do you, or Jasper, David, do you have any comments?
I imagine not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Jasper?
No, I think the email that Adam sent, I think all the council members have it so they have the responses. The patio, it looks like we're looking into.
Right. The one thing too that I did for a little research on this, this material that's put in as a liner, people think, well, this is impervious. But what happens is you get silt in there and it doesn't, it isn't, like you can have a flower bed with this wheat block. You can pull it up after a few years, the soil's going to be full and dry under you. And I've seen things from the Minneapolis extension on that. So that's something that we can't just hold our eyes and say, this is great.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Then we have Gary Gunderson? Gunders, okay. And you are, so state your name and address and then...
I'm Gary Gunderson, 1271 Morningview Drive. I'm just a shock to see 25,000 assessments.
Okay.
I've been there 32 years, I don't remember seeing a water deep problem in that neighborhood at all. So to replace all that makes absolutely no sense to me.
So just for clarification, just in case you're not familiar with it, the 25,000 was just for the road, for the road portion of it. The water portion was being paid for out of the water fund. So just, just, you know, and we did have a very lengthy discussion. And although I don't agree with the Notches a lot, I think on this one, I, I do agree with you all. So we will be looking at that, okay? We are, we are going to be looking at that. We talked about different things. We are going to look at that. We understand your, I totally understand your concern.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, so, okay, another thing, just so you know, we're going to have more discussions on the special assessment, okay? After we've come to some kind of determination as to what a fair assessment would be, then we hold an open house and we invite the public in. We share all of the costs with you and we also then tell you what we think this assessment would be, okay? And then we have that discussion with all of you. So this is not a done deal. I don't want you leaving here tonight thinking, yes, you're going to be assessed 25,000, okay? Because I, I totally understand that that's a big number. So hold on, just a minute, just a minute. I'm, I'm going to go through this. I just thought I needed to do a little clarification here. So now we have Christine DeVinc. Okay.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Christine DeVinc. I live at 5335 Eastfield Avenue. And I am going to second and third the comments made by Cindy Notch and Dr. Gunderson. And, and reiterate that the, I have been here since 2018. I bought my, my home in 2018 and in four years, I have, I have seen my property assessment go up 38.5%. And now an assessment tag to be added to it of $24,500. You're killing me. And I'm going to come. So the, my concern tonight in Ms. Whalen and in response to your explanation to what we're, what we're dealing with here today is, so now I'm concerned about the fact that we're here today to discuss and approve the engineering fees that go along with this assessment for now it's just the street and gutters for $25,000 for each of our 84 pieces of property. And I just, I plead with you to consider this on a far broader landscape. And the 38% property assessment on top of the 25, nearly $25,000 is, is quite a feat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we understand. All right. Next, we have Ray Stoll.
Thank you, council. I'm Ray Stoll, I live at 1210 Morningview Drive. I am not an accountant. But I can say that the 24,000, to me, like the rest of my neighbors, is shocking. And I am here to pretty much repeat the things that you've heard already. I have heard that WSB is working with a fee of 20% or 21%.
I'm not sure that that's correct, but we can check into that.
Okay, I would like clarification on that. I've been in the construction trade for the last 30 some years and I've never seen a contractor with a fee of 21%. So again, I'm encouraged to hear that this is strictly a roadwork project and not the water.
No, the water main, the water main will also be fixed, replaced because it, you would want to do that at the time you're doing the work. The water main is, what, about 30 years old? And then to redo the road and pay a lot of money for a new road and then maybe 10 years down the road having to dig it up again?
That makes sense.
That does not make any sense. So we are going to do the water main at the same time. However, that is not being assessed. So the cost to do the water main is, you are not assessed for that.
Not being assessed for that.
Right, right. So I just wanted to clarify that.
On top of the 25, which is again, not that 25 is a number, my property values and taxes also are going up.
Sure.
Somewhere between 30 some percent.
Well, okay, we won't get into property taxes tonight, but yes, I understand your concern.
You know why I'm here?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
And thank you, thank you for your comments. Next, we have, let me put my glasses on. Okay, Steve Wagner? All right.
Okay. Hi, my name is Steve Wagner, I am 5440 Morningview Court. Recently, out of a job, retired, whatever you want to call it. And I'm just very interested to, now, we've lived there 35 years. I'm interested in how this process of special assessment works. So I'll be in and ask you all sorts of questions over time because I'd love to know how it works, not just that we got a special assessment or it showing up on my tax bill. So, hi.
Hi.
It'd be nice to meet you all.
So it just kind of, real quick, to give you a real quick rundown. And again, like I said, we'll have a hosting open house. And at that open house, we'll go through all of the details about the special assessments, how it works. There's all kinds of processes that we have to follow according to the law, state statute. So there's public hearings that we have to hold. And, and then we have to also give you an amount during those public hearings. We have to tell you what your special assessment would be. And that would be the maximum that we can assess you. And like I said earlier too, the council is discussing this assessment since it is quite large and we're, we're looking at...
Do we ever get a say in which direction the road goes or anything? I'm just curious.
When you...
As you say that you're going to bring us the end product at an open house, how about between now and the open house? Do we get to interject our opinion?
Actually, no, during the open house, that is the best time. Then you can interject and you can ask the questions and you can give us...
It's pretty much done at that point, isn't it? If I understand things right?
No, not, not necessarily.
Okay. Well, then that's why we're alert.
Yes.
So I'll talk to somebody.
We're going to do the project, okay? So that, the project is going to go forward. But how it goes forward and, and the assessments are, are up for discussion, okay? So that is not a done deal. And there's other things that we would like to share with you, curb and gutter or rural or, you know, that type of thing. So we can share all of that with you during that open house process. And then the final design is done after that, okay? So that might help, I think, maybe? So you'll have plenty of opportunity.
Could I ask a follow-up question to this question about how, how do we, in the learning process, how do we get like comparisons to the project that was just done in our neck of the woods?
Okay.
To see what worked?
The question, I'm going to repeat your question because we're on camera and I want to make sure everybody hears this. So the question is, how do you get comparisons for projects that were recently completed? Actually, all of the projects that were recently completed and their assessments are public information. So if you would like that information, call City Hall. Brian Grimm can provide you with that, with that information, okay? It is public and, and the cost to do the project is, is included. He can tell you that and how much the people were assessed. He can tell you that as well, okay? All right, next, we have Iris Hacker.
Can I have a three minutes?
Okay.
But again, now I wanted to talk about the, the roadwork here, if I could. And basically, what I'm seeing here, Minneapolis Avenue, very similar to our street. And I believe their assessment was around $8,000 is what I was told. And maybe that's not true.
I think it was a little less.
Okay, but less than that, six to eight I saw, but somewhere in that net. And I don't know why ours would be like three times that amount, would be my question. And as far as this, I think that like a survey should be given to the residents here. And okay, so here's one option, you can pay 25K per residence and you're going to get concrete curbs, you're going to get new water main and you're going to get the vituminous in here. Here's another option, you can pay five, five grand maybe. And all we're going to do, we're going to take out the vituminous, we're going to recompact the grade that's there. If it's rolling a little bit on edge, we're going to add more subgrade, compact that. We're going to put new vituminous in with a vituminous curve. We're going to direct the water to the existing catch basins. We're going to put on these tall beehive drains that don't clog. The ones we have, we have to get out there and break it if there's a rain because they clog up, okay? But I think that's what should happen. And if you ask people, you know, two options, you want to spend five grand and have this or the other, I think most would say they want the cheaper one. And we don't necessarily like the look of Plymouth. The other thing is, is it was said that this needed to get done with the water and everything because it was a real problematic area as far as having a lot of trouble with the water. And my wife put a data, sorry, data request in and almost a month ago, the 23rd of May, she's got it back today, from my understanding. And basically, she asked, in the last 15 years, how many water main breaks were there in our area, in this, this area that's being looked at now, 84 parcels? And in that 15 years, what was the total amount spent by the city in fixing these?
Mr. Notch, you know, these are excellent, excellent issues and questions. And these will be answered and we can talk about this in depth at the open house. Seriously.
See, what I'm thinking is, if you turn WSB loose with this project, I think you should tap the brakes right now, is my opinion.
That's your opinion and thank you for it.
But keep in mind, and it's my understanding, they make like 10%, overhead 10% profit. They're on top of one another, so it's about 21%. If this is 5 million bucks, it's over a million that's going there. And I question whether they would really be good stewards of our resources if they're benefiting, the bigger the project is, the more they pay.
Sure, I understand, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And next, Mike Hacker? He's going, okay, all right. That concludes everybody that signed up. Is anybody else here that would like to speak? Going once, going twice? Okay, again?
Ray.
Ray, Ray Stoll?
I just, I just want...
Can you just quickly come to the microphone? And then I'm going to close it out after you speak.
I'm hoping that at the open house, that we'll have a design or at least some input into the design. And it just came to my attention, curb and gutter or not?
Right.
We don't have curb and gutter. And I think if you took a survey, no one would want to pay for it.
And that's good to know.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah, that's good to know.
I don't think we need sidewalks either, I'm not sure.
I don't think... You're not going to get it. That I can guarantee you.
On the bike rail and the tunnel.
All right. With that, but no, honestly, folks, thank you for coming and thank you for your input and your comments. Again, we will be holding an open house, inviting you and more people back. We don't have a date yet for it, but you will be notified. It will probably be August, September. I mean, do you know kind of approx? I don't want an exact date, but just kind of to give the folks some kind of idea.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we're looking at the end of August, early September for a neighborhood meeting.
Okay, so keep that on your radar screen. You will be notified and looking forward to seeing you folks here again at that time. You are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. So don't feel, don't feel compelled to leave. Please feel free to stay. So...
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So next, we have our consent agenda items. Are there any that you wish to remove? All right. Otherwise, we're looking to approve consent agenda. Item A is approve our work session meeting minutes from June 6, 2022. B is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from June 6, 2022. C is approve our resolution to approve claims. D is a resolution to appoint, appointment of election judges for the primary election on August 9, 2022. E is a resolution to approve a step increase for a public works maintenance worker, Christopher Sandberg, which would be effective July 8, 2022. F is a resolution, resolution to approve professional services agreement with WSB for the 2023 street project. And G is a resolution to approve professional services agreement for the 2022 pavement maintenance project. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through G?
Some.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Ms. Mortensen. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Next, we move on to a business item 6A and that's accept the bids and award the contract for the 22 overlay project. And I think this is good news, right?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm pleased to provide the results of the bid opening for the overlay of Sunnybrook Drive and Sunnybrook Lane to be completed this year. We had six bids received ranging between $184,260.60 and $222,928.50. The estimate for the construction cost was $222,432.50. So we were pleased to get a little bid from GMH Asphalt. The council may be familiar with GMH. They are doing the Jennings Cove project. So they submitted the little bid of 184,000 and change. We are recommending that the council approve the contract with GMH and then they can, we can get going with contracts and get a schedule in place for that paving to occur. GMH has indicated that they would, the paving, the millen overlay, pardon me, of these two roads would coincide with putting the final lift of pavement on in Jennings Coves.
Because they're the contractor for that?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Okay, great.
And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
We're happy to see $34,000 less than estimated? That's great, good news. All right. So is there a motion to accept the bids and award the contract for the 22 overlay project with, is it GMA?
GMH.
H, GMH?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperland, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Mortensen. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So now we'll move on to our added item and that is, would be 6B, our mid-co discussion. Ms. Poulphus?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Back in February, the city council approved an agreement with Midco to build out nearly 500 underserved or unserved homes. At the time of the approval, staff, council and Midco were all under the impression that these were the remaining unserved homes. Since approval, we have uncovered a few pockets that are still underserved. Short of going door to door, there's no really way of ensuring we have captured all the homes. Dutch View Road is one of the pockets identified as unserved. And after discussions with Midco, the project would cost $66,000 with a local contribution of $40,000 to serve the six homes on Dutch View. I reached out to the county to request additional financial support. And Midco, the director of broadband at Hennepin County and myself met on Thursday. And the county's main concerns, which I imagine are yours, were, is this the final leg of unserved homes? Are we capturing everything? So I asked Midco to provide an estimation for the remaining unserved homes that both they and I believe are unserved and have been made aware of since the project approval. And then a new update, late this afternoon, I sent you, I forwarded you guys the email. I received an estimate from Midco to build, to include Woodedge along with Dutch View because Woodedge is unserved as well, the back half of Woodedge. This addition would serve 20 homes and cost $122,000 with a local ask of $52,000. Based on my decision with the county, I think this makes the project more appealing to them, serves more homes and the cost per home is cheaper. However, in the interest of time and because Midco needs to know prior to August when they begin construction, the city would have to be willing to fund the entire project without knowing if the county will support them. So tonight, you have a few options. Amend the current contract with Midco to include just the Dutch View addition, which would likely be taken from ARPA dollars. Amend the current contract to include both the Dutch View and Woodedge to provide service to the entire unserved addition. Direct me to work with Midco and MediaCom to apply for a deed grant.
Midco and not MediaCom? Are MediaCom too?
Nope, sorry, I wasn't finished. Midco or MediaCom to apply for a deed grant next year. And then, or option four, I can contact the property owners and communicate other options such as T-Mobile hotspot. And Verizon LTE to the home is also available on Dutch View at least. So with that, I can answer any questions. We're just looking for direction.
So if we just, so what you're saying or what Hennepin County is saying is if we just do Dutch View, then most likely they're not interested in participating?
I think they'd be interested less if we just do Dutch View. But I should know more by the 18th, I just don't know now what their interest level is.
The 18th of July?
At the meeting, yeah, I could provide you with an update.
And if we include the other portion, they might be more interested? Um, and if we include the other portion, they might be more interested?
I believe so.
Also at a fifty percent, so that's twenty-six thousand, so we would have to pay twenty-six thousand?
If they can, want to contribute fifty percent, yes.
And what's the drop dead date for midco?
Early August.
I mean, where they would have to know?
Yes.
Okay, so-
They would want an agreement approved before construction begins.
Okay, and so hopefully we would know by the eighteenth of July?
Mm-hmm, I'm thinking at the very latest, we'd bring an agreement back on the first of August.
Well, I was gonna say, wouldn't we know by the eighteenth of July whether or not we're gonna have, um, participation?
I hope so, they took a while last time, so I'm not sure.
Well, I've got a call out to Commissioner Anderson, so maybe we'll hear back.
Yes, but I told Phil, is his name, the director of broadband, that I'd give him an update after a meeting tonight. I think I should have a good grasp, but I don't want to make any promises.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, I'm fine. So question number one. Um, I, I don't care how we missed them, but do we think there are others that we could have missed?
I mean, there, there could be. I haven't heard from residents, and midco doesn't know of any, so I think those are the final pockets.
Okay, so that's one. Two, um, do we know that those families do want to be included in midco? Have we actually talked to them and asked them what they're doing?
I imagine so, but I don't know if that-
I've heard from several people.
Yeah, on Dutch View and Woodedge, I've heard from them.
So we know for sure that they're not with any other carriers that were not-
It's frontier.
They for sure don't have MediaCom.
So, and we know that?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
So we know that if we pay this money, they very definitely are going to become customers of either, of midco?
No, that I don't know. I just know they don't have any other option.
That's everyone's decision. They can stick with frontier. I mean, anyone in the project could stick with frontier if they, if they really want to.
Sure they could.
They would like another option that's not frontier. I understand what the, what the positive option is. But the bottom line is, if we're gonna lay out money, we want to know they're going to do this.
Yeah, but then you'd have to scan-
Otherwise, you're laying out money for nothing.
But Councilmember McGregor, we're, we're doing that for the, for the four hundred and ninety-five homes. We don't know if all of them are gonna sign up. We don't know that.
We're assuming the take rate will be high.
We assume the majority.
Well, so we'd have to assume, assume that these people-
I assume the majority will.
Yeah.
But I can't guarantee, I mean, some of them may not even have internet service, I don't know.
How many residents?
Twenty.
Twenty total?
Total for the entire-
Yeah.
Addition, for just Dutch View, it's six.
Right.
Adding Woodedge, her, doesn't change what's in our packet for Dutch View? It's still the sixty, forty, or sixty and?
Yeah, so the entire project cost is a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, and, um, the local contribution is fifty-two, so I actually think the ratio is a bit less.
A little bit less, yeah. And if we-
Probably because they're getting more customers as well, so that's often-
Should be a benefit to them.
Yeah.
Correct.
Right.
And it starts them, if they want to ever keep going along County Road fifteen.
Right.
It's a good jumping off point for them, too.
It's not like they're running a long distance.
Correct, it's about two miles.
So we could take another four thousand, or four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars out of our, um-
Correct, cable fund.
Cable fund.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other, if, if, if we end up with a contribution from Hennepin County of the twenty-six thousand, we'd still end up with twenty, twenty-two thousand out of our, our ARPA funds that we'd have to take back from the road fund or the water fund.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, what, do you want to go for the full amount?
Well, I'd like to hear what the numbers are, if, if everybody's gonna come to the party.
I imagine by then I'll know if the county's in support. I assume if they're gonna contribute fifty percent like they did, you would be fully on board, and you can maybe direct me to just move forward with an agreement for approval.
Right.
If I don't hear back from the county, or they want to come in for less, I can bring it back for another discussion, and we can kind of decide where to go from there. So on the eighteenth, you'll kind of know what the county's doing.
Okay, I think that's a good plan.
Because we have another meeting prior to the drop-in date.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
All right, meantime, I'll call Kevin again, Commissioner Anderson. All right. Then we have the twenty-twenty-three levy discussion.
Yes, um, I'll take that one, I'll start up in Jasper, if you want to jump in at, uh, any points, too, feel free. So yeah, I, I laid out in the, uh, the packet, starting on, uh, back in the work session packet on page thirty-five, sort of, I, I assume everyone sort of knew, and we've talked about in some of the previous, you know, council actions, that the, uh, some of the general funder components to the levy was being, um, adjusted through some of the decisions with the, you know, the compensation study and, and, and those type of things. So I just sort of tried to lay out, um, uh, sort of things that cities committed to, items to be addressed, and the cities have been doing annually, so I don't know if anyone has any questions, or, uh, I almost just did one slide that was gonna be, what does the council feel comfortable for a preliminary levy starting point? Because that's really the, the crux of the, of the, of the matter, because, um, as you can see, um, you know, the, uh, the compensation study is about a four percent adjustment to the levy, um, you know, two hundred, a little over two hundred thousand. And when you add in the union contract increases, it's another, you know, percent and a half factor. We have the mid-year hires that will have the full impact, next year's another percent and a half, so, um, just through the general fund, you're looking at, you know, seven percent, you know, impact there. So, and then you throw in the fact that, uh, you know, inflation obviously has been doing its thing or whatever as far as, um, you know, fuel prices, gas, you know, all that type of stuff, um, if you even, you know, add in another two percent there at the top of page thirty-six there, just as a conservative, you know, another hundred thousand, you know, or something to budget more just because, you know, we didn't budget for five dollar, you know, diesel or fuel and stuff or whatever, um, as we were, you know, in the forest rain, and we look at the average and stuff or whatever, but, um, so, you know, if you add another couple percent there, and then, um, we have been using, you know, it was a planned use of fund balance, you know, in twenty-twenty-two, but if we want to look at getting back to, uh, weaning off that use of fund balance, that's another, you know, a few percent adjustment there, a hundred and fifty thousand, if we try to do that over the next couple of years, so you're looking at a, a general fund impact of about, you know, twelve percent, you know, for sure over ten percent, ten, eleven, twelve percent. Um, then also, I just threw in the fact that, um, you know, we have been adjusting the road levy up right now, we're sitting at eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, you know, if we would do another hundred, hundred and twenty-five thousand there, that's another, you know, two, two and a half percent there. And then we've been trying to boost up our, our capital equipment plan, our CIP plan, by about fifty thousand a year. Um, that'd be another hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy-five thousand for those type of areas, so when you're looking at, if we did a lot of the things we've been doing, you know, it would be, add it all together, you'd, you'd be looking at, you know, twelve to fifteen percent. Um, obviously, I don't know if that's, you know, where anyone really wants to be to start, so I did list a couple mitigating, um, factors there at the bottom of page thirty-six, um, you know, obviously the roads, we, we had a lengthy discussion on the special assessment policy tonight, we've got, you know, that's, I guess even, you know, that, that's gonna be discussed also, but as far as just the, um, you know, we can do something different with our road levy, we could keep it at eight seventy-five, we could even bring it down a bit for a year, knowing that we're packaging a bunch of road projects, and then the, the levy impact for those will really kick in in twenty-twenty-four, so there's a little bit of flexibility there to try to offset some of the operational, you know, adjustments for twenty-twenty-three. Um, another item we have done in the past is, is charge a two percent, um, sort of administrative fee, seeing there's a lot of time and effort that, you know, goes into, um, you know, general fund employees, you know, myself, you know, Jasper, everyone down the line, as far as on these, you know, projects coming up in twenty-twenty-three. So that would be money that we can bring back into the general fund, you know, eight million dollars times two percent, you know, another hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty thousand. So that could be a mitigating factor as a, sort of a one-time revenue into the general fund, um, to the tune of about a few percent, so, um, that's-
Um, one of the things I noticed is you head on here somewhere, the, um, Mount Fire depart, um, Fire Fund, isn't that going away in twenty-three?
That is going away, and I was counting on that.
Seventy-two thousand?
Yeah.
So what?
Jasper sort of poured cold water on that.
What, why?
Or I guess maybe even Kathleen, maybe you know, is my right.
Okay, so-
Uh, yeah, and I, I'm sure Kathleen would give an update tonight at the end during her little session, but, uh, they're, they're kind of re-investing in the employees because they've kind of not adjusted wages, pension, because they have had this bond payment, well, the bond payment's falling off. They've done some comparisons, I think it was in your info packet, kind of looking at different wages compared to the Mount Fire Department, so they're gonna reinvest in that, um, there's gonna be some allocations for building maintenance now, so it kind of is, the direction was to, to use it for operations and not, uh, have it come back to the city.
All right, so we just won't label it, um-
Yeah, you know-
For debt levy?
Yeah, correct, or instead of a debt levy, it would be more an operations levy, as, you know, us for our share of, uh, the contract will go up. I mean, whether, whether it was for debt or for operations, it's basically still gonna go, so, um, yeah, maybe, jumping ahead to page, uh, thirty-nine, um, this was a chart that Jasper had put together, and, uh, I think, you know, for twenty-twenty-three, we sort of just in that gold column put, uh, I don't know if you have seven and a half percent's a good starting point, I guess that's, that's what we sort of want to know, knowing what council, you know, knows, and sort of seeing it summarized in front of them, what's, before staff gets into the budget process too, too deep, um, what's a good target, I guess, as far as, um-
Okay, so I have some questions. So, the net levy that you have at four, at five point six? If you, okay, if you went, if you went with it the most of the, um, twelve percent, although you had said up to fifteen, and I think I used the fifteen for my number, you were gonna take, you're going to take that actually up from five point six, you're actually gonna take it up to seven. So dropping it down to less than twelve with your mitigations?
Yeah, the mitigate, I mean, so yeah, so if everything added in, it's fifteen, um, percent, but if you take off that general fund piece, which I think we probably could all agree on, that's not a bad thing to do, that's, you know, brings it down to twelve, if you don't bump up the roads by a hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's two and a half, so you're down to about like nine and a half, and then, um-
In the CIP, we can bump that down or not, hold it or bust it down.
So then you're about at eight and a half, and then maybe do you, I mean, do you adjust the roads down from eight seventy-five to eight hundred for a year, you know, or something? And there's, so, yeah, I mean, you're getting close to get, or-
So keep, so keep going across.
Okay.
So, the, the net tax capacity change, you're saying that it's gonna jump?
That, yeah, and that's just used for, um, to me, I've never been a big fan of the tax rate, and I think Jasper maybe likes that, that number a little better than, than me, but that's just, the tax rate's how it gets applied out to people's individual property tax statements, but a big factor in the tax rate going down that much is that, that, you know, people's valuations, like they talked about tonight, going up forty-eight percent or whatever, so to me, I like to use the far-right columns better, the levy per capita dollars versus the tax rate, because you can see in that calculation, even with the seven and a half percent increase, we're still staying pretty, you know, in that six hundred dollar range as far as how much money we're levying per person in the city. And I think that's pretty fair, or pretty, and we had that audit, uh, slide at, at the audit, and made that show, we sort of were almost on the lower end of, when you looked at some of our comparable cities, a lot of them were in that, you know, six hundred to six seventy-five, seven hundred as far as, you know, how much they levy per residence or whatever, so.
So, so.
And then net tax, sorry, if I may, the net tax capacity is set by the county, we have no say in it, so it's, yeah, and those numbers are pretty well dialed in, I think.
Okay, so with your, um, getting it down to nine percent and your mitigations and whatever, how much bigger than five point six do you think it's going to be?
Oh, if we, if we were at nine percent, uh, which, just, just the, the net levy number, or are you looking at, um-
Just the net levy, break through this question.
Yeah, another percent and a half would be-
I don't need it exact, just give it to me, bro. Six?
No, 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 if you were at, if you were at nine percent levy, or nine percent increase, you'd be at five point seven.
Five point seven.
Yep.
Five point seven.
Yeah, million, yeah. Be another eight, eight, eighty thousand or so.
And then your, uh, your levy per capita would go up to six fifteen, your tax rate would go nineteen point two-five at, at nine percent levy increase.
So it comes down to, do we want to do your mitigations?
Yeah, or not, how much on, on, on the road, I guess?
Well, I think, I think we can, so we're gonna do the bonding next year. So if we just leave the levy, the road levy, or even reduce it slightly, and then the following year raise it again, um, that to me makes a lot of sense, because we're, we're gonna have to bond for it anyway. The, the, um, CIP budget, either leave that or else reduce it slightly. Um, and then the other question I have for him is, how, uh, what, um, is, equipment certificates are coming off? We should have at least one coming off.
Yeah, you can see on page thirty-eight, the, uh, the twenty-seventeen one is coming off for fifty-seven thousand. I may have done a partial levy in twenty-twenty just because we had enough fund balance to not, because I think our twenty-twenty certificates is more, if we levy the full amount, it's more like seventy-five, so there, there could be some small amount that we could reduce their net, you know?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, right.
So that would be another half a percent or whatever.
Another percent or, yeah. That's kind of, I, so I think we're gonna be close, we could get closer to the seven point five percent, maybe tweaking here and there. Um, I, I think we're gonna be closer, or could get closer to the seven point five.
And i-if I may, the, the main exercise here is just to give staff some direction as far as what, what the expectations are when we go to prelim levy, yeah.
I considered the seven and a half to eight-ish, to nine-ish, time, like, at least a good starting point.
Wait, wait, we said seven and a half, now we're all up to nine.
McGregor was at nine, maybe.
Yeah, and, and, and just, you know, some of the mitigating factors, again, uh, we'll have to have the conversation in twenty-twenty-four to build those up, so it's, it's what you feel is, is valuable to the community, you know?
And knowing we've been averaging about a three percent growth rate, so really, if we have seven and a half-
Would be three and a half, or four and a half, yeah. Shall we start there?
Hold on. So we're just, instead of increasing it this year, we're just gonna wait and do it next year, because everything we're mitigating, we need to add back in, correct?
Yes, but it's not gonna be, so in other words, we're gonna mitigate a little this year and add, add some in, and next year a little bit more in the fol, you know, so it's, the impact is gonna be reduced over a number of years.
Are you advocating more for keeping the, the roads levy, keeping, increasing that annual, or, uh?
Well, I mean, we talked about last meeting, keeping the road levy on the path it's on, so we can use that payment, part of that to pay off the debt levy.
And we can-
But now we're talking about possibly decreasing it a little bit, so that we, we're, I mean, we need this money, right?
We do, but I think, well, because I think the debt payment, depending on where we shape our, you know, the eight million, eight and a half million dollars worth of projects, I mean, the interest rates, obviously, you know, they just, the feds just raised the rates or whatever, so, I mean, if the, our annual payment ends up being six to seven hundred thousand, I guess we're at, you know, eight seventy-five or eight hundred, so we've got it there, and we know that basically twenty-twenty-three, we can pretty much bank, because we won't really, we won't have to pay back, or, um, we won't have to levy for it for twenty-twenty-four, so to me, if we pause and was at eight seventy-five or eight hundred for this year, and then for this year and then jumped it, you know, we still have nine, you know, nine hundred thousand or something, you'd have, I mean, you still have probably three-fourths of it dedicated to our debt payments, but you'd be putting a couple hundred thousand in, you know, just for that other agenda. And we did, we are transferring three hundred and some thousand this year of ARPA funds to the road fund. So to me, that makes, feel a little better if we hold or take down the roads levy a little easier, because we weren't budgeting to do, I mean, the ARPA funds obviously came, you know, it wasn't budgeted really, it just sort of happened in twenty-twenty-one, and then we allocated into our twenty-twenty-two budget this year, so.
So we're still gonna have money in the bank for the, for what you're talking about?
No, I know that. I'm just, obviously, if you don't add the hundred and twenty-five thousand, we won't have it the next year in the bank, basically.
It's your different baseline you're working off of and different money banks set aside. It's a little different.
And we can afford not to increase, increase the capital equipment plan?
I don't fear you'll be happy.
I mean, nothing's getting cheaper, correct?
No.
Correct.
Nothing's getting newer.
Do we know what's coming up on the CIP this year?
Yeah, we're looking at that, I think, at our next budget meeting at the end of the month here. I mean, I'm probably a squad.
Again, we can, we can talk, let me, let me focus this a little bit. I think, you know, I'm kind of feeling more comfortable seven and a half. You might feel more comfortable nine, nine and a half. Maybe bring something back, maybe the nine or nine and a half. What do you?
No, I'm, I'm, yeah, I just want to make sure we're not cutting stuff.
Bring back the nine and a half, and then we can discuss that and maybe bring it down. I think, you know, starting up here, and then we can bring it down, hopefully, rather than starting below and then having to build that up. So let's, let's do somewhere nine, nine and a half. Does that sound like a good plan? Knowing that we may want to cut, you know, we'll see.
So for the budget process, we want to get a number right, and we'll come back with nine, nine and a half. And then we'll have, hey, if you want to not cut from here, here's another two percent thing, and then you can give us that feedback for the prelim levy.
Right.
Fully aware that you can always bring that back for the final adoption.
But I think we'll want to see what we can do for the pre-limit as well, and then after that, we can still work on it, so. All right.
I, that's, I think that's a good starting point. I just wanted, I know you guys all know this, people are struggling out there. And, you know, we're paying a lot more for gas and food, and if we come up with a high, you know, tax thing, people are not gonna be happy.
Yeah.
So we have to consider that.
No, I know, I know. So we'll have to work on it, work real hard on it. So, all right.
Thanks, Jim.
All right. That concludes our business items. So we'll move on to administrative. Staff reports?
Yes, I have a very brief one here, Mayor Whelan, members of council. So we obviously just did the strategic planning session before this at three o'clock. You'll likely see a report on August first on that to evaluate. The League of Minnesota Cities Conference is this week. I know Mayor Whelan and myself will be up there on Wednesday through Friday. National Night Out is August second, and if you'd like to get on the list, just call up the PD and they'll work you through that. And then we received a request for an iris proclamation, so infants remembered in silence. It's something, I'm not sure how these are generally handled at City Council here, but generally, it's if a council member or the mayor or anybody wants to bring it forward, they can for consideration. I've heard of this group. We actually, they approached us in La Sure and we did it there, but it's just, I think it's proclaiming a day of remembrance in silence for infants that were lost. So, and it's October fifteenth. I'm not advocating for it, but we've received the request and it's been requested that we just bring it up, and if somebody is passionate about it and would like to see it brought forward, we can, we can do that, so.
Do we have any information from the, or of this organization?
Yes.
Can you maybe share that, and then we can decide? So, please share that. Thank you. All right, great. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, I get these two once in a while. Most of the time, they're pretty bizarre, so I don't even, they just keep going. All right. I really don't have anything other than the league conference, as Jasper said, and then I will be attending National Night Out, so you can put that on your calendar. And, and then we have a break. So I just want to say, so we don't have, our next meeting is July eighteenth, so we have a bit of a break there. So hopefully, all of you have a wonderful Fourth of July. Don't get burned with fireworks, you know?
I think it's sunburn.
Yeah, well, sunburn maybe. There you go. So, yeah.
Oh, okay. I attended the Northwest League, it was a mayor meeting for Lisa on the eighth, and the speakers were from metro cities in the league. Their first names are Patty and Gary. I can't get their last names.
Patty Newman, Newman and Gary, yeah.
Yeah, they're very good speakers. They gave an update on the legislative session on issues pertaining to the cities. They said they started the year at the surplus. It was not a budget year, so the session ended at a, and she called it a whimper. There was her quote. Nothing happened. And she said it was just very unusual, because there was no, you know, last minute things trying to get scrambling in for a special session and so forth. So there were very few bills signed. The cities then did reports, and it was very interesting because all cities are seeing staff resignations and turnovers due to retirements and other job opportunities happening in a lot of cities. So what happened, you know, in our situation is not uncommon. So they were very interested to hear what Minnesota did, of course, and so I gave them a very thorough testimony of what we did. The Met Council is also reporting that their IT staff is leaving to private sector. So they're really struggling, I mean, a lot of people. And the police force is also down by thirty-four percent. So they're, everybody is struggling right now. So, and most of them are looking at doing the comp study like we have done. So Highway twelve is, again, continues to be tough on the communities, the local businesses. It was a good meeting. It was interesting. So, thank you for going.
Hi, Mayor Sarah Creek. Last Thursday, fairly short meeting. No update on the South Whale Tail feasibility study? Brian from Favor Heart said that the grant window runs from mid-July to the end of August. So there's nothing he's concerned about at this stage. And I approached him about, when he had some solid numbers about coming to one of our meetings, probably in their special presentations, be at the beginning of the meeting, to give us an overview, education as to what an L L treatment is for, why it's done, why South Whale Tail's a good candidate, et cetera. He said he'd be more than happy to do that, so.
Maybe a work session. Well, either one, special presentation or not. It shouldn't be very long. It's not too complicated.
Maybe a work session, depending on his work responsibilities, might be earlier than necessary. But he'll keep, keep him, he'll keep me advised. Okay?
Okay. I attended Rockin' the Block, which was a fundraiser for the Glastrie Center. It was run exceptionally well, and what I mean by that is the band was great, food was good, and everything, it came on time, everybody was, everybody had what they needed to run it, but we just didn't get a lot of people there. We didn't get the people that we should have had. Now, the cash bar was being run by the Lions Club, and their comment was that the first year of anything tends to run like this, and you just have to keep having it over and over again. And so we'll have to, we're gonna have a breakdown of what was right and what didn't work. I think, I think there was a parking problem. I think that there were other issues that could have been done in different ways, so we'll take a look at that and try to go forward.
I attended the Mount Fire meeting with Jasper on June ninth. A shorter thing than I usually do. The building payment comes off, but as we talked about earlier, they're gonna reallocate the money. The relief fund wants a five percent increase in pension benefits, which would bring it from five thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars to six thousand one hundred and fifty-five. The payments go out currently to forty people who still get monthly retirement benefits. Anyone new who retires gets the lump sum payout, which is currently at a hundred and seventeen thousand, so it's for twenty years. Chief wants a dollar an hour raise for the men. They currently get nine fifty. Talked about before, St. Bonnie gets over eleven, and he wants it to go up to twelve. Their mound is by far the lowest in the entire area by at least two dollars. So the raise makes sense. Same thing with the neighboring pensions. Excel Services is eighty-seven hundred, Long Lake is sixty-eight. St. Bonnie's is lower at the forty-eight hundred, but I would bet next year's budget will have an increase in that for St. Bonnie. They are recommending maintaining a hundred and thirty thousand operative in the operations reserve for the fire contracts. The duty program is going great. If they do end up switching to duty crews, you'll have to schedule weekly shifts, so that off causes an issue with volunteering and everything. They currently have sixteen plus guys responding for calls. Calls to date so far in twenty-twenty-two for the whole area are two hundred and eighty-eight. Sixty of those are duty-only calls, well, sorry, last year they had sixty only duty calls. Mutual aid is a huge part of their numbers, you know. The Fish Sprite was a huge success. He did not have the final numbers as of meeting, but I'm guessing at the July fourteenth meeting, he will have the final numbers. But they were very, very happy. The line for the fish was in Shirley's parking lot. It was crazy. Some people got there and said that they weren't gonna eat. They just went straight to the beer tent, so.
Well, that always goes over well.
Sounds like it was a great event. I did ask about WAFTA after the meeting, because it was brought up at the St. Bonnie Fire Meeting, and what the dues are going to. The dues are going into a reserve fund to cover the twenty-five percent share for the fire departments, what they are expected to clean up. The other three parties are Excel, Centa, Boeing, and the Army. Yearly maintenance is fairly low. They have the mowing done once or twice a year, so minimal costs. Chief estimates that the reserve is around three hundred thousand right now, which should, in theory, cover our twenty-five percent, or twenty-five percent of the caustic in them. The issue is the other three parties aren't moving forward at all on it. So we could litigate it to force them to do something, but that would drain the reserves then of having to. Plus, there's the issue of how much to clean up, what level do we bring it back to, just getting the ground okay? One guy wants to get it, so his kids could eat the dirt, or do you take out the cement infrastructure that's there? So that's also part of the issue, but I just thought that was interesting, because I didn't really know anything about it. So that's been a little bit on that, that nobody probably wanted to know. We'll be going to the July meeting.
Thank you, the planning commission. Thank you. June?
The July fire meeting.
Oh, by the June.
And the July.
Planning commission meeting next Monday. Yeah, we have some fun things on the planning commission, so. Anything else staff-wise? Otherwise, we can be adjourned.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with a aye. All those opposed, motion passes. We are adjourned.